I'd like to call the Village Board meeting to order if you would stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone, welcome everyone watching at home. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll.
Trustee Carter.
Present.
Trustee Marisville.
Present.
Trustee Kazam.
Present.
Trustee Gett.
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Present.
Trustee DeBoer.
Present.
All right, we would be at item four, approval of the minutes from the Board of Trustees meeting on October 20th, 2020. I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion.
Motion and second?
Second.
Any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. For announcements, just want to let everyone know that we are working with the Chamber. I've met with Andrea earlier in the week, so we are still trying to plan events for the holiday, excuse me, trying to plan events for the holidays that would be done in a safe way, so we'll have more to report on that, but we plan on having a Christmas tree lighting, visits from Santa, et cetera, but the details are not quite ready, but we'll get those out to you via website and social media when we know more. Next, we have a presentation on an update on Galena Road and Route 29 by Farnsworth architect Paul Corey, and Paul is also part of the team doing the community-wide commercial plan for us along with House Levine, Farnsworth is part of that team. You know, we have faced challenges with Galena Road and Route 29 for many years. We all know it's not a very safe road, that it needs to be safer, and we also feel very strongly that there's a potential for, huge potential, for ecotourism and economic development if the road were made safer and including residential development along that corridor. So, we all know that we've been lobbying for that for quite some time, and I would say it was about three years ago when Chief Sutton and I went to Senator Kayler and Representative Gordon Booth, and we had a meeting with IDOT, and after that meeting, that was pre-Capitol Bill, but after that meeting Senator Kayler looked at me and said, "I will support this project if we get a Capitol bill." So, low and behold, we get a Capitol bill, and that's passed, and the Governor announces that we have $68.5 million appropriated for redoing Route 29. So, that's the first part of that. The second part is that we didn't want IDOT to just come in and lay down brand-new pavement, that we wanted to, we wanted to collaborate with them on the design. So Senator Kayler has, he arranged and facilitated a meeting with IDOT recently, and we're going to update you on that meeting tonight. Senator Kayler is socially distancing from us, but Dave is up in the balcony there, and he along with Paul Corey are going to lead us through this presentation, so I'm grateful for all of the work done. We're lucky in Peoria Heights, we have a wonderful relationship with our elected officials, and Dave is one of the best. So, Dave, do you want to say anything before I turn it over to Paul Corey?
I'll speak after Paul.
No? Okay.
Can I speak after Paul?
Beth, anything you want to add before Paul takes over?
No, just to add to what you said Mayor and compliment the effort by all for this, so it's very important, and we're excited to hear the presentation.
Paul, welcome.
Thank you. And all right, so I'm going to project onto the screen here, if you want to see the screen, you might move around.
And Paul, if you could make sure so everyone at home can hear.
Yes.
Presentation, if you use a microphone, please.
Okay.
Chris, we got a second handheld, that's the best one? Okay.
Okay, so if I stop speaking into the mic, please remind me, just like give me the high sign or something. So we had a meeting with IDOT on October 22nd, the Village had requested to meet with them to share some of the things we had been developing with the comprehensive plan with them, some of the ideas that the Village has had, and in return, IDOT shared some of their plans, the planning effort that they're in right now. The process for an IDOT project is, it's three phases, they're in the first phase right now, which is kind of the broad plan of the project, this is where they identify if or where they may need properties, and they go through the property acquisition process. The second phase, which is still a year to a year and a half away, is the detailed construction design phase, and that process is about a year long, and then after that is when the road construction would be bid and be able to begin. So, you know, the project is a couple of years out, but the timing is right for us to have met with them and to get in early in their process. The next steps, I'm going to give a little overview of the meeting before I give you the presentation. The, IDOT is in the process of setting meetings with other stakeholder groups, so with the city of Peoria as well as the Park District, and as time goes on, there's been some discussion of having some meetings with some of those other entities at the same time. So, we think it was good timing to meet with IDOT, it was a great open communication with them, we asked questions, they provided answers, and we've been maintaining communication since the meeting and want to keep that dialogue going. The design, just for those of you who are probably wondering, the design includes four lanes, basically in the narrows in the Peoria section of the roadway, so it'll be two lanes of traffic in each direction, and then once you get out of the narrows, essentially in the Peoria Heights section of the roadway, that's where it'll be five lanes, so it's two lanes in each direction and a center turn lane, and then the entire section will be curb and gutter, so that's, will be a major improvement over what is there today, instead of some sections having curb and gutter, some sections having paved shoulders, and some sections having gravel shoulders, it'll be uniform throughout. There are, I think they said, over 50 access drives along the stretch that's being improved, and all of those drives will be reconfigured at their entrances with a concrete apron, and then there's a 10-foot wide multi-use trail that will be incorporated into their design as well. So that's, that's the summary of the meeting in a nutshell. What we presented to them is what I have on the screen now, and this was also presented, I think it was that same night, at Webinar 3, which was a part of the comprehensive plan process, it was the third and final webinar, and so again, if you saw that webinar, then this will be a lot of repeat for you. I can, there are a lot of slides here, I can blow through this as fast as possible, and then come, come back to if there are any questions. Okay, seeing a nod from the Mayor, so I will try to make it fast. We first started talking about the potential of the region as an ecotourist destination, where there's these great natural, natural features from, from the Glacial Times and from the torrent, the top right corner, that's a torrent ball, Greg can tell you about that, they've been finding torrent balls in Spring Bay, and it might be the biggest collection of torrent balls around, I don't know. But one of the things that's happening is just communication between these small, smaller river communities and looking to band together to take advantage of the great national, I'm sorry, natural resources that are here. And we look to LaSalle County, they, Starved Rock is receiving over a million visitors a year, so it seems that the state and Chicago have discovered Starved Rock finally, and there is a huge ecotourism draw in that area with Starved Rock, Matheson State Park, Buffalo Rock, and those areas are literally right around the bend in the river to Henry, and so we're a stone's throw away from being able to kind of do the same thing that they're doing there, and hopefully even coordinate with them to make this a larger regional And so we're sharing all of this context with IDOT to show them that, that the Village is going through a comprehensive plan, they're, they're really strategizing on how to move forward in the future, and Galena Road is a major part of that, that development, so we're just trying to lay the groundwork and the background for that. So focusing more in on the Heights, we have the Rock Island Greenway, the future connection to downtown Peoria with the bike trail, the proposed multipurpose trail along Galena Road with the Galena Road improvements, McLuggage Bridge, the new span is going to have a bike lane attached to it, and then a trailhead is part of that project as well on the, on the Peoria side of the river, and we've heard that East Peoria is working on connecting up some of their trails with the east side of, of the bridge. So there's a lot of, a lot of bicycle and non-vehicular infrastructure at play right now. Couple that with the existing parks and the proposed work that's, that's being done by the KDB Group with redevelopment of Alfresco Park and San Cody Lakes on the Spring Bay side, and there's, there's just a lot of new things coming online that frankly, I think these are things that people are looking forward to and, and want to take advantage of. We proposed different ideas on how to activate the bluffs and how to get people into nature and connected with nature, these are approaches that are sensitive to the natural environment, so you can see that this, this mountain coaster can be designed around existing trees using the existing slope, there are not deep foundations for this structure, so that means there's not excavation equipment running up the hillsides, and so it's, it's kind of light on the ground, and the idea is, again, is to get people into nature so they can engage with nature and respect it as a way to promote the natural surroundings. Skiing is an idea. The former observation tower at the end of Glen Avenue, another idea was these kind of unique rental camping tent structures. Zip lining and ropes courses, these, you'll, these, if you, if you look for these things, these are popping up kind of all over the place right now, and it's, and there's really an opportunity because this, this is the type of adventure and outdoors activities that people are looking for. Mountain biking, opportunity for perhaps a destination spa located on the bluff, and then ways to engage the river, we understand that water taxi is something somebody's already in the process of, of trying to develop to be able to connect to the, both sides of the river, creating a kayak launch is another idea, and so those are just some, some ways of, we had proposed of activating the bluffs. So now I'm going to focus in on Galena Road, and it's important to point out that everything that we're showing here, and that's part of the comprehensive plan, is aspirational, it's, it has not been vetted, it has not been, you know, all the details have not been worked out, it's really aspirational, it's a big idea, and, you know, we hope that that starts to lead people to, you know, thinking hard about some of these areas and how, how we can make some of these things similar to what's shown occur. So the line is indicating the improvements for Galena Road with the multipurpose trailway, and then what we're indicating here are different ways to be able to connect downtown Peoria Heights or, or the top side of the bluff down to the lower side of the bluff. And so there's a few different connections that we'll focus on in the, in the next few slides, but we have a utility easement along that, that comes out to the, the water tower next to Befield Park that connects up to the end of Glen Avenue, that's probably the closest link to Prospect or, or to downtown. Roosevelt Road, we know exists today, but is a little bit difficult to traverse on a bike, and then there are some other trails that are, are semi-developed or have been developed over time or in the process of being developed closer to Herman Engineering, the Herman Engineering property and across the road from Alfresco Park. And we've identified two key locations for pedestrian crossings, we talked with IDOT about the opportunity to have pedestrian crossings at Galena Road, and they explained that because of the observed traffic speeds, that they're not allowed to put an at-grade pedestrian crossing, it's, cars are at a minimum traveling 45 miles per hour or faster, it's just, from their standards, it's just too dangerous to put a pedestrian crossing there. So what we're focused on as goals is in the area of Poplar Lane and Befield Park, an area that in the upcoming slides we'll refer to as Galena Village, is to see if we can have a traffic signal warranted at that intersection, and then at Alfresco Park to be able to create an over, an overpass or a pedestrian bridge that goes over the roadway and, and the rail, the railway. So we refer to that as the Alfresco Gateway, Galena Village, and we think there's an opportunity to work, for the Village to work with the private, private property owners on the riverside of the railway to be able to create another pedestrian connection between Galena Village and Alfresco Gateway, and there's already gravel roads in much of that area, so it wouldn't take much, you know, as long as the, the property owners would agree to allowing, you know, people to use that space, but that would be another way, if, if only one pedestrian connection comes to be, then that would be a way for people to traverse between those two destinations on foot. And then at Gardner Lane, we already have a traffic signal, and using that as an opportunity for a pedestrian crossing as well would be great. Okay, so now we're focusing on the, what we call Alfresco Gateway, so we have the Herman Engineering property on the left and Alfresco, the former Alfresco Park on the right, and then on the sketch on the right-hand side, the left side is a proposed redevelopment of the Herman property, we met with Tracy and discussed what some of their plans are, and they would like to, you know, develop their property into, into something more than what they have today. And then what's indicated on the right is really a, more of a naturalized approach to Alfresco Park, creating some trails to be able, for the, the public to be able to access the park and get right up close to the river. So I, two of the red arrows I had mentioned before, we're coming down in this area next to, next to Herman's property, and it'd be great to be able to connect those trails right up with the, the multi, multi-use trail that's part of the IDOT project. Mentioned the pedestrian crossing, which would be an overhead bridge, and then redevelopment of Alfresco Park into a riparian area, which is natural area along the edge of a water body, so there's a concept on the top left, concept image, and then on the, the bottom left is Miggs Field, former Miggs Field, Northerly Island in Chicago that has been turned into this, this type of natural amenity. What's shown is just a proposition of what the, whoops, what the density of the buildings or buildings could be on Herman's property, so multi, multi-stories, there's, there's not a lot of, like a lot of the space next to Galena Road, there's just not a lot of surface area, so you have to go up in order to get the square footage that might be desired for development, and then, so we're showing two buildings of this density on their property with parking in front of them, and then kind of a wider naturally landscaped area between the parking and the roadway. And we have a list of recommendations that are making their way into the comprehensive plan, I won't go through all those now, but, but these are all written into the, the draft that's going to be submitted to the Village before too long. And then focusing on Galena Village, we have Befield Park on the left, and then some residential and commercial and popular park on the right side of Galena Road, and then the proposed sketch on the right-hand side, and so this is really following, I'm going to jump ahead, this is following what House Levine had created a couple of years ago in 2018, just a, a concept of what development, how development could take shape in that area, and I think that was something that was used by the Village as a precedent to building some momentum behind the, the Galena Road project. What's indicated on the right, you'll see three dashed lines, the blue line is the flood, the flood plain, yellow is the 100-year flood, and the red is the 500-year flood, basically the, the closer you build to the river, the more challenging it is to get those buildings approved, so you see the majority of the construction is, is outside of the blue line, and we think there are some opportunities to be able to, to construct in that flood plain, and I'll show you an image of that in a moment. So we talked about the goal of having a traffic signal at this location, on the left is a conceptual image of what, what that intersection could look like, so you can, you know, everybody's seen the sterile traffic signal intersection, but to make that into something that has some landscaping and some color and some other materials into it could really be a major landmark along that stretch of Galena Road and a way to allow pedestrians to safely cross the road. Some examples of the type of density or type of buildings that are proposed along Galena. These two images are depicting naturalized landscape, so instead of having more formal manicured landscaping, we feel like the fit with the Heights is something more natural, and the Heights, it's in the Village's name, this connection with nature, with the connection being at the top of the bluff, and with the work that Rutherford was doing in, with this building and other buildings throughout the Heights using a lot of wood, you know, a lot of cedar, cedar shake shingles, it's really, we've really gotten the sense that the Heights has this really strong connection with the natural surroundings, and we think that's something to take advantage of. And so that's what's being proposed here from the landscaping and natural landscaping, if you're using local native species, it can actually be easier to take care of and maintain as well, so that's, that's a big plus. And then another big idea that was proposed is a Village connector or a mechanized lift. The image on the top left is a chondola, a gondola in Grafton, Illinois, they, they call it a chondola because it's a combination chairlift and gondola, so there's some open-air chair seats as well as the gondola, and this has been open, I think, at least a year, and I was talking with Mike Bailey, and he, he had visited here this early fall, late summer, and he said it was packed, they had a line for however many hours he was there, there was a line the entire time, and it was people taking this lift up to a vineyard, and when they were selling the idea for the project, they talked about these, the commanding views that people will have when they're on the lifts. So where this would be located, or where it's proposed here is along this water easement, and it's really kind of the closest connection to the downtown, of course, we'd have to, we'd have to look at where the top lands, and be some coordination with, with neighbors, of course, but we don't think it has to go all the way to the top of the hill in order for people of all abilities to be able to, to traverse the bluff. Another idea of different types of mixed-use buildings, these projects are showing residential on the top, it's, it's a multifamily residential above commercial space, on the bottom it's single-family homes above commercial space or office space, the, the properties on the bottom are actually designed to be live-work units, so you'd have, you know, if you're a person who could have your office or your business on the lower floor, and you could be living above it. So we think that'd be a nice fit for looking on to Befield Park. And then the idea of a river's edge restaurant, something right on or in the river, built on stilts as a way to mitigate the floods. And lastly, some opportunities along Poplar Park, to enhance Poplar Park with some different boardwalks that would allow people to get very close or right into the river, at different times of the year, these can be built in a way to, to be able to rise with the floods as well as, they can be built in a way to resist the, the ice flows in the wintertime. So similar list of recommendations, and though the meeting was focused on Galena Road, we took the opportunity to talk a little bit with IDOT or to present to them about War Memorial Drive, this is the real economic driver, economic engine for the Heights, and we'd love to be able to, to see this enhanced over time. Talked about gateways at Boulevard and Prospect, decorative streetlights, this is something that was mentioned on the, the previous slides that I skipped over, but decorative streetlights along the Peoria Heights section of Galena Road as well to, to kind of create this cohesive feel throughout the Village. Improve sidewalks along the roadway, the Village could make some connections of those sidewalks deeper into the neighborhoods. Private lot enhancements, that's, that's landscaping, I'll show you a photo of that in a moment, and then creating some additional crosslot access so people can get between businesses without having to go on to War Memorial Drive. It's an example of, I think this is University Street in Peoria, which is an IDOT route where they did some decorative lights, traffic lights and, and streetlights, so it could be something of this character, or at least there's a precedent that they've done this before. This is a gateway sign that is at the entrance of WIU and McComb. This is one of your, your business owners, Greg's Florist, and the nice landscaping job that they've done around the property. So the last bit on gateways, we talked about how the Village is looking at different opportunities for trailhead locations, reinforcing the idea of gateways along Galena and War Drive, and then another proposed idea for a gateway at the end of Glen Avenue near, near Knoxville, so really trying to define when people are entering the Heights since, you know, for a lot of people, they don't really know where the boundaries may be between Peoria and, and Peoria Heights. And that is it, so Senator Kayler, if you would like to speak.
Yeah, that's a good explanation, Paul, and sorry for this strange way of speaking to you, although these are very strange times, so just trying to make sure that I'm, I'm safe for my grandchildren and that. What's happened here is, I think, very unique, there's, there's kind of two ways that communities do economic development, they either wait for it to happen, or you make it happen, and it's very clear, Mayor, that you and the Village Board here are going to make this happen. Peoria Heights is, is very exciting right now, just in terms of the development that you've already seen, I think that with these kinds of plans, it's going to be even more exciting. And remember that, you know, because of the pandemic, people are going to be changing their work and living patterns quite a bit, I hear more and more about the need for quality of community because people can now work from home, and they'll be doing that more and more, so that's what they're going to be looking for, is places that they want to live, that are going to have the amenities that, that they need and that they desire. I think that this has been really fortuitous because of the timing of this, number one, the plans that we're talking about with IDOT on Galena Road are not new plans, they're old plans that were kind of dusted off, and we, remember when we met with them the first time, we said, "Well, let's go back to what we had originally thought about," and that is five lanes, get, you know, to get the turn lane separated from the through lanes, and, and so what the discussion is right now, and I'm, I want to give a shout out to Kenzel and Karen and all the staff at IDOT, because Region 4 has been just extremely pleasant to work with, their charge by the state of Illinois is just to make sure that the infrastructure is kept up and that traffic moves in a safe, you know, way that can, can flow through the, through the area, but what they're, what they're willing to do is to say, "Okay, we've got almost $70 million to spend, with your ideas and, and what you want to do with it, let's make sure that, that enhancement enhances also your opportunities to create more recreation or economic development or just quality of, of life." You become a destination point, and, you know, I represent a lot of communities, and I want to also just say that, thank you for mentioning Representative Jahann Gordon Booth, she and I worked together on the Capitol Bill, Representative Spain as well, on making sure this happened and making sure that those resources came back to this, this area. But, you know, what's, what's exciting is that this becomes But, you know, what's exciting is that this becomes a destination point that helps all the region. It's not just Peoria Heights, because as people come in to use some of the amenities that you talked about, Paul, or to, you know, the bicycle trails that we're seeing developed here throughout the Peoria area are phenomenal. And people come just to use the bike trails. We've talked about, you know, how we enhance the bike trails along Galena Road and how we link those up to what's going on with the Rockland Trail and others. In fact, there is also $50,000 into the budget that we passed that is for the trailhead development here within the city, however you propose to use that. So I think there's a lot of things coming together at a time when it just, you know, we're kind of at the right place at the right time. And so I commend the village and you, Mayor, for having the foresight to really take advantage of this opportunity and say, let's get a bigger bang for our buck than just new asphalt lanes of pavement on Galena Road. So, you know, it's a thrill to be able to work with you. My job is not to design your highways. You don't want me to do that. My job is to make sure that you're just, you're getting what you need, that you're talking to folks at the state, that they're listening to you. And I think all that's happening, that's happening very well, and it's just exciting to be a part of it.
Thank you, Senator. Let's take some questions then for Senator Kayler or Paul. Yes?
Paul, are you talking to me about bicycle trail at all, as far as along Galena Road there?
So that's, when I use the term multi-use trail, that's the bike trail. That's their terminology. If, to them, a bike trail is something, I don't know, it's something different to them. I don't know the detail of it, but I've been instructed by the traffic engineers that it's a multi-use trail.
And by the way, that is part of state law now, is that as we redevelop, you know, state routes, that there has to be consideration for bicycler walking trails as part of that. So this doesn't just happen, it happens because it's law.
Hey, Paul. I think one of the most pressing issues for the citizens along this route is safety of the road. The turn lane, will it run the entire length of the four-way highway from Peoria to Gardner Lane?
That's my understanding, yes.
Aside from the center turn lane, are there any other traffic signals that are planned between, along the five-lane highway?
They do not have any traffic signals planned. We're, you know, maybe a challenge to, for them to be able to warrant a traffic signal, but they do not have any traffic signals planned in the initial plans that we looked at. And just a point on traffic signals, there are something like 11 different ways to what they call warrant a traffic signal. And so this is IDOT standards, they have a list of different ways to, basically to justify a traffic signal. And from talking with the transportation engineers, as it sits now, that it doesn't look like a traffic signal is warranted. One way that traffic signals have been justified in the past is to base it on proposed development. And so that's where, in the comprehensive plan, we'll be discussing sort of some next steps of how do we look at, you know, whether it's the plan that was presented here at Galena Village, or talk with property owners on the type of development they might like to do themselves. But we can start to calculate square footage and types of use and convert that into number of vehicles, number of vehicles, and then that's basically, if you meet that threshold of the number of vehicles accessing Galena Road at that point, then that may be a way to warrant. We think that's the best way to warrant a traffic light at that location.
I know Longshore and across the street is, I don't know what it's called now, Galena Park Terrace, a little bit north is St. Jude Court. It seems like a majority of the accidents are right there. The entrance and exit to Longshore and Galena Park Terrace are almost right across from each other.
Mm-hmm.
So that seems where a good concentration of the accidents are. I think the center turn lanes would improve the safety of that road. I think they're almost a necessity.
Yes.
To any plan that's successful along Route 29. Are there any right or left-hand turn lanes in the plan, do you know?
I believe there are. I think it was, I think there are quite a few of them. I don't know that it's at every one of the 50 access points. But if I remember, I don't know if anybody else who was there remembers them, them talking about that and can answer that better than me, but I know they are looking at some. I'm not sure how they decide.
There's some discussion about even whether there could be some kind of a frontage road put in so you wouldn't have to have access to the main, you know, highway at every step that there is right now. Paul's exactly right. In fact, there was a traffic signal asked for several years ago, quite a few years ago, and IDOT did not approve it because they have very strict standards that they adhere to, but, and it's not the traffic on Galena Road, it's the cross-traffic, you know, does it warrant that kind of an expenditure? We will spend some time talking about the future development, just what Paul outlined there, and try to convince them that we need to have something along that span that stops traffic, because we could have the pedestrian bridge at Al Fresco Park, but there needs to be some other place that traffic is able to be signaled and stopped so you can have people getting across the road that way. That's a negotiation that we have to have, and we're ready for it, and I think that we've got some good statistics on our side.
I grew up in Longshore, so I know the idea of turn lanes there. I know in the early 90s, it was something that they really fought for and didn't get anywhere. Same with St. Jude Court. So I know that the turn lanes are really something that we'll come to fruition.
Well, somebody heard you back in the 90s, I guess. It just takes a little time to get the funds.
Well, it's taken some time to get IDOT to understand, I mean, I'm going back now decades, but, you know, the, you know, I always said this when I was on the Peoria City Council, trees are impediments to traffic as far as traffic engineers are concerned, you know, but trees make the aesthetic of the neighborhood. And so you have to kind of change your mindset. It's not just to move traffic through that area as fast as you can. It's now to, is to begin to look at safety, and of course, safety is always a consideration of IDOT, but it's to look at the aesthetics and how it enhances the communities that it serves, too. It's not just to move traffic from one end to the other, it's now to do it safely and to do it in a planned way that makes sense for the development of that community. That's taken a while to get to that point.
While we're doing all this, is it possible to reduce the speed on Galena Road? Can we ask them that? Can we request that?
I have requested that in the past, and Dustin and I had a conversation about this. That is probably going to be a tough sell. That's why I think that we can maybe trade that off for the stoplight, because that would at least, you know, at intervals stop the speed. But it is a state route. You can't, really, right now, and you can speak to this, Chief, but trying to get people to drive 45 on that is a bit of a challenge.
I mean, I understand that, but it seems almost as soon as you hit the Peoria line, the speed limit drops right there. But if you're heading towards downtown, the speed limit drops to 35. So why is it, why is it 45 in Peoria Heights, but then as soon as it hits Peoria, it drops at 35?
And one of the things that we talked about, and I don't know, I mean, that's going to be pursued certainly, but one of the things we talked about is that as the, as the road changes and you begin to put in curbs and bike lanes and different things, and you begin to make it look like a more urban, you know, part of the road, it then naturally slows that traffic down. Right now, it looks like it's just kind of out in the country.
Yeah.
You're gone. But all that is under consideration, yes. I just don't want to guarantee you that it's going to, that they're going to say yes to slowing it down, you know, maybe to 40. I don't know.
I mean, I get that. I just think they need to take consideration, especially as the development does happen, you know? I mean, if we're not putting in turn lanes at every entrance, I mean, this causes an issue whether you have a pedestrian bridge or not, you know? If we have a bunch of people turning into Al Fresco Park, like going 45, which, let's be real, they're going 50 or 55. It's a safety issue.
And part of it is, how much, how much do you want to spend in terms of enforcing traffic?
Understandable.
I don't like to speak in absolutes, but as long as we get the center turn lane, I think everyone along that road is going to be really happy.
Yeah, that'll be a big improvement for safety.
Anyone else? Paul, thank you. Senator Kayler, thank you. And thank you again for the $50,000, too, for the capital expenditures, so thanks.
Well, as I say, there's good news and bad news. The good news is that you're in the budget. It is law. The bad news is not coming in, the revenue is not coming in as fast as it.
There's a gentleman sitting up the front row that'd like to have that $50,000 for a trailhead, so.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we'd be at comments from the audience. Anyone would like to address the board, please come forward and give your name and address, and try and keep it under five minutes. Comments from the audience going once, twice, comments are closed. We would be at trustees' reports. The first is Public Works, trustee Carter.
I don't think we have anything this time.
Okay.
Pretty good.
Thank you, Cheryl. Property maintenance, building maintenance, trustee Mariscal, anything?
We do not have anything.
Economic and community development, trustee Kazam.
Thank you. Something I neglected to say, and I think Paul made it really clear earlier in all the questions, I just want to reiterate that I was at that meeting, and the conversation of safety was paramount in all of those discussions. So whether it's turn lanes, gutters, all these things, the whole intent is to slow traffic along Galena Road. In addition to that, we've, I want to report that we have, our application for the trailhead in Peoria Heights was submitted on November 2nd. I know we all voted to support that initiative. And I just want to give a public thank you to the great efforts of Ryan Harms and Eric Miller of Tri-County Planning, who worked aggressively to get this in on time, and they definitely realize the impact and importance this can have on our community. In addition, Bruce Brown, who has been fantastic, and trustee Weisenberg, and Theo Hare, and the others that were involved in the trailhead committee. Also, earlier this month, the mayor and I met with the president and CEO of the Riverfront Museum, John Morris, who's really very excited to share the new and permanent exhibits of the Peoria Riverfront Museum. So to that end, he will be offering, or the museum will be offering, another free day for the village of Peoria Heights. The date has not yet been determined, but I'll get that information to everyone as soon as I can. And in the meantime, we'll be doing a tower talk with John Morris, so that will be able to be viewed on our website. And then, of course, chief and administrator Dustin Sutton will have a report on the DCEO Cure Economic Support Program, but I just want to compliment your team and everybody who worked so diligently to get that out, actually in advance of most communities in our area. And this is a grant that will give $250,000 to our area businesses and provide up to $5,000 per business. So Chief Sutton can speak more to that.
Thank you for that report. Next, we'd be at administration, trustee Gett.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report at this time. Chief, that does.
I just wanted to announce, speaking with the mayor today, we're going to close Village Hall starting Friday. The offices will be open. If you need to make an appointment or pick up a permit or liquor license, we'll make arrangements for employees to go out and meet you in the lot to make sure you get your documentation. But we will be closing Friday, and depending on how long these mitigations are in place, we'll play the board meetings by ear. We have to go back to remote, but as of Friday, we'll be closing Village Hall. So, but the offices will be open, so if you need anything, please reach out. Everyone will be here. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Next is fire, trustee Weisenberg.
Sure, thanks, Mayor. Last meeting, we discussed a fire department cadet program. I believe we handed out a packet to all the trustees. We are still looking for feedback, if anyone has anything they'd like to add or recommend. We're very excited and looking forward to getting this program off the ground. Other than that, Mayor, I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Chief Walters, I thought I saw you here, anything to add?
No.
All right, thank you, guys. Police, trustee DeVore.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a few things. The Peoria Heights Police Department is going to be, again, participating in No Shave November and December. All proceeds will go to the Peoria Heights School District and, for their annual food drive, and then also to the Center of Prevention of Abuse. Our police department has also partnered with Meals on Wheels. Meals on Wheels has been providing things to people who cannot leave their homes since 1971. The focus is to provide meals to people that are ages 60 or older and have a spouse that's also at that same age. They have many food relief programs. Throughout the years, I'm sure you've seen, like on social media, our officers have partnered with Meals on Wheels to provide food on Thanksgiving Day. Due to COVID, they are not going to be allowed to do that, so the police officers took their own money to create these bags that you see here. This is prepackaged food on the inside that they will be delivering to those residents in Peoria Heights that would typically get something from Meals on Wheels that will not be allowed to due to the COVID-19 restrictions.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Thanks, everyone. On your reports, we'd be at old business. Any old business coming for the board? Hearing none, we'll get right into new business. The first is approval of an electrical proposal and the amount of $5,300 for Village Hall generator circuits. Trustee Mariscal, could I get a motion to approve that?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve the electrical proposal.
In a second, please.
Second.
Dustin, would you explain this?
As we discussed last meeting, we have a generator out here that we purchased through the ETSB 911 when the dispatch center relocated, and really, we're only getting a partial use out of it, because the entire village is not hooked up to it. So the proposal is to hook the entire village up to the generator, so when we do have power outages, you know, we'll have power here. So I think it's a no-brainer. I think it's, and a great cost, so.
Thank you. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
Trustee DeVore.
Aye.
All right, thank you. That passes. Next, an update on 5619 Galena Road site plan from August 5th, 2015. Trustee Kazam, are you doing this, or?
Well, I think that it looks like Mark was going to.
Mark, you ready?
Well, yes. We have an active court case on this property. This is, dates from 2015 zoning approval, when the, before the building was even constructed. They got site plan approval. They called for them to plant a screen along St. Jude consisting of six-foot-tall bushes. It was brought to our attention, you know, after the building was up, you know, like earlier this year, that they have not complied with that requirement. We initiated, we tried to get voluntary compliance, we initiated a case. So that's where we're at at this point. The business owner is asking, they partially complied by planting small shrubs, and I don't, I haven't driven by their, Dustin, I don't know if you're, I mean, can you describe what they did plant? I mean, they're nowhere near six feet.
No, they're.
Nor do they supply a screen.
Correct. They're small trees. And going back to the zoning, zoning board meeting when it was approved, it just didn't meet their requirements, and, you know, going back to that date, there was no follow-up. So it was brought back up to us. We reviewed it. It wasn't in compliance, so that's, we ended up with the court case. And I think they came back some different options.
Yep.
And I think that's what we want to discuss today.
Exactly. So here we are, they didn't plant the six-foot trees that they were supposed to. Now they're asking, can we build a fence? And, you know, there's more than one way to screen property, you know, a business use from residential use. I think we all understand the reason for this. They want to build a dog-eared, you know, relatively inexpensive privacy fence, which obviously serves as a screen. We've got to decide, is that something that we want to accept, or do we want to stick to the original approved plan, which was greenery, six feet tall?
I think one of the other issues going back to the zoning was access to the business in the back of that lot. I think that was one of the purposes, they wanted to run that tree line all the way parallel to the road or the fence, is because of all the traffic that was going in behind there. And I think the pictures that trustee Weisenberg just passed out shows, obviously, there's still traffic going through there. So I think that's what, that was, that was the, that was the goal at the zoning board at that time.
Yeah, it's obvious that that's what they're using it for, and that may explain why they haven't voluntarily complied to this point. So we're really just looking for some direction from the board. some direction from the board on how flexible we want to be with a property owner who has not yet complied with a zoning mandate that dates to nearly five years.
Well, I don't want to be hard-nosed on everything, but, I mean, a dog-eared privacy fence would look nice, you know. I, when he said about, you first said a fence, I was figuring they were going to talk about where I used to work. They had chain link fence and they had metal strips through that. I, I don't think the neighbors would want to be looking at that. Dog-eared picket fence looks better, but, I mean, six-foot trees sounds nicer. I mean, I don't, I don't really have that much of an opinion. I think what they go with a fence.
Eventually, what they did plant will grow, but I'm not sure what species they planted. I don't know what the, you know, the height is going to be, nor how long we want to wait.
That's going to take a long time.
If they couldn't comply in five years, what makes us think that they're going to care for a wood fence?
They won't.
Yeah.
I mean, if this is how it's going to be, I mean, a wooden fence takes maintenance in, are we going to be back here in five years being like, you have to clean up your fence?
That's a good point.
I don't like going against, you know, routinely what the zoning, the zoning board serves a purpose. And I don't like going against what the zoning board recommends in order to qualify a specific business for what they're requesting. So I feel like this is something that we need to examine and enforce.
I mean, I agree. I think they should put the trees in.
Yeah, they were probably, they were told to put six-foot trees and not put trees in that eventually grow that long.
And, and more than that, they agreed to that.
They agreed.
Yeah, well, those, it's going to take forever for those trees to get to six foot.
If, if ever.
And that's going to have, I think, if we're set on the trees, then we should make them.
And it's, you know, I would just add, it's part of the give and take, and that's why we have a zoning board. Different businesses are appropriate in certain locations. And sometimes, a business may not be appropriate. But if you take certain precautions or do certain things, such as screening off the, the high-traffic, high-volume area from the adjacent residential area, it makes something that's otherwise inappropriate appropriate. So here we are, five years later, the neighborhood has had to deal with this business without the appropriate screening. So it, it's hard to be real sympathetic when they, they knew going in before they broke ground, this is what was required.
I also think we have to consider, like, what kind of precedent are we setting? If we allow them to not put in the trees, with all the other future development or current development we have going on, that we've made agreements with other developers on what their site plan is. If we allow them to not put in these trees, so then, you know, who's the next developer that's going to come and say, well, you didn't make my next do it, so we're not going to put in the trees that we agreed to.
That's fair.
I also want to point out that enforcement is much different now than it was five years ago. At that time, there was a separate department doing code enforcement for us. And now that was eliminated shortly thereafter, and now it's under the police umbrella. So the efficiency on enforcement is much different now. That would not happen.
No, but I'm just saying it just sets a precedent. Not that I would, not that we would allow it, but like, it sets a precedence for someone to come back to us and say, well, you bent the rules for.
No, I, I agree on that. And that isn't why I was making the statement. I'm just giving some information on why that, we waited so long to revisit that. It's because it was a different approach to code enforcement at that time. So that would not happen again.
Correct.
So just a little background. So they initially did plant the trees along that road.
Okay.
So when we're talking about, will they maintain a fence, they didn't maintain the bushes. They all died off. And they didn't replant.
Oh, there you go.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, but I don't think they ever got six-foot.
But they didn't plant six-foot trees?
No, they planted saplings, is what I call them. They're this big off the ground. Maybe they've gotten a little bigger now.
No, initially, how big were the trees they planted?
There's one still there. It never grew. It's maybe.
Oh, still the same?
A foot and a half.
So, just to be clear, I'm not feeling any strong sense to approve the fence. It seems the other way.
Well, let me chime in here and say one, one thing, and I usually don't, but this is a board decision. But this has gone on for five years. I think five or six of us weren't even here. It's been so long ago. The zoning board heard all the evidence. And the zoning board made this request. I think we should back our zoning board up and insist that this business comply with the, the trees being planted. And that's my own opinion.
Okay.
And, Mark, when, when we reapproach the business, make sure that, you know, make it clear, I don't think I gave you this one either, but the berm runs all the way up to the property here. You can see the, like, all the, the trees are posted because this is where the cars going out. So ideally, we'd like to see the trees along the, the berm there.
Doubt it. Any other?
I, I would agree. I mean, I, I think the zoning board put it in place, what he needs to do. He agreed. Whatever the zoning board told him he did, he needs to do it. And it needs to be done exactly how the zoning board wanted it.
Very good.
It needs to be done in a timely manner.
I have my orders. Thank you. Any other?
Timely. Can we put a timeline on it?
Not if I.
Well, we will.
You can put a date on.
I'm not going to, you know, I mean, we, we do want them to survive, so I'm not going to order that they do it in December. But, but, and I think our next court date is the first week of December. So as soon as the weather is appropriate to plant, you got to plant. Absolutely.
The six-foot trees, not.
Six-foot, not, not something that eventually might grow to be six-foot, but actually six-foot. Yes.
And tell them to take care of them. Don't let them die off.
Thank you, counsel. Keep us updated, please, on that. Okay. Next is approval of cancellation of the Board of Trustees meeting on November 24th, 2020. Trustee Kazam.
I make a motion to approve this.
Do we have a second?
Second.
If I may, just, I checked with both the clerk and the administrator, and I think you both agree that there's nothing urgent that we need to meet for. Is that correct? Okay. Any discussion on this?
So is the reason we're canceling because we don't really have anything? And with, and with the new mitigation going on, is this a reason we're considering canceling the meeting if we don't really have anything urgent? Or is it that some people won't be able to be here? I mean.
No, I think the main, I believe the main reason, in my opinion, is why we're canceling. It's a holiday week, and there's no business to really urgent that needs to be conducted. But I, I think the pandemic also is an important part of it at this time, too. So there, just don't need to meet. That's, would you agree, chief? Anyone else?
So with, with the closing of Village Hall Friday, are we also going to restrict public meetings going forward?
You know, we didn't really talk about that. I, I would expect, unless the board feels otherwise, I would expect we would continue to meet with masks and social distance and open up the building for those nights. I don't know if you have a different opinion, Dustin, or?
No, I'm open either way. I think both, both worked. I know when we did do remote, we got, we got into the first, the first trial period was kind of rough. But after that, I think it was pretty seamless. So I'm open to either one. I guess whatever, what everybody's comfortable with.
Are we allowed a certain amount of people in here?
25.
25.
If people felt uncomfortable, could they call in?
Yes, I think that's the option we gave everyone last time. And I think half the board did call in. Correct.
So I think if, if you feel comfortable or uncomfortable coming to a, a large gathering, I, I think, please stay home, and we'll make arrangements for you to, to call in. We've got the technology to do that. As of now, I personally like a public meeting where people who want to address their elected officials can come to a public meeting and, and, and address us in that fashion. If things get worse, if the virus gets worse, then we might have to change that approach. But, but for now, I think we would continue to have open public meetings with the ability for board members to stay at home if they've, they felt the need to do so. Is that, does anyone disagree with that?
No, I'd rather meet in person. I think it's harder on the, like, our phone calls, even though it worked, I feel like was harder. So I would rather attend personally.
Anyone else?
I'd rather attend in person as well.
Madam clerk, whenever you're ready.
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeBoer?
Aye.
Okay. Next is approval of Resolution 2020-3, a resolution of the village of Peoria Heights approving an application and participation in DCEO Local Cure Economic Support Payments Grant Program and approving grant documents for eligible local businesses. Trustee Kazam, would ask for a motion to approve that.
I have a mouthful. I make a motion to approve this.
And a second, please?
Second.
Go ahead, Beth.
So I just, counsel is here, and he'll be able to explain this further. But this is just, we are approving the application for funds. And the application is in front of us. And then, Mark, if you have anything?
Sure, sure. And, and the clerk can probably answer more questions than I can about it. My understanding and my reading of it is that they, they have actually approved us for the funding. So they need us to get all the paperwork in order so that they can give us the final, is that accurate? Or am I overstating?
That's, that's the next step.
Yep.
We do, we did have a posted award, which, this is the next step in the documentation of the resolution, and also the approval of the application. And
Yes.
Like I said earlier, is that we're, we are ahead, or trustee Kazam stated, we are ahead of a lot of municipalities that are just, just now applying for it. But this would be the next step.
My compliments to the clerk. She put a lot of effort into this. Coming up with this application was not an easy process. And she did all of that background work. So by the time it got to me, my job was a lot easier. It, it made things far more efficient. So I want to give her my, you know, accolades because that, that makes a big difference. And this is an enormous opportunity for the village and the businesses. I can't stress that enough. So hopefully, it all works out. Everything pans out the way we're thinking. But for tonight, we are just approving the application. And, you know, the, the form that we've developed, that the businesses would actually fill out when they apply for the grant.
Correct. Thank you, counsel.
You bet.
Let me say one thing, too, about our staff here. Even though we're very small, we have one of the most capable groups of people anywhere in the region. And I know a lot of entities, a lot of cities are just now beginning this process. We way ahead of the curve, ready to get money in the hands of our businesses to keep them open. So thanks to Dustin and Stephanie and everyone else who helped get this done in such a timely manner.
I'd just like to make a couple of comments, Mayor. This is, as you all remember, the BDD grant we rolled out earlier this year to the businesses. This is a much different, different grant, and the, the application is much different. There is more layers to it as far as what's needed for them to get the money. Obviously, it's a lot more money. It's, it's $1,200 was the BDD. This is a max of $5,000. So I just want to know, to let the business know in advance that this is a, this is a much different program, and there is no leeway. Have, everything has to be filled out to a T, because it is covering more than just mortgages, utilities, and loss. So just a heads up that the businesses that do come in to get this, it is a totally different animal than it was in the BDD grant. That was an in-house grant that we ran. This is different, obviously.
This is up to $5,000.
A max of $5,000. Correct.
Anyone else?
Since Village Hall is going to be closing, will the applications be available online? Or do they have to come and pick them up?
Well, they won't be available until we get everything approved through DCEO finally. This is the next step. And once we get final notification that, that they're, they're happy with all the documentation that we have, that'll be the next step. We'll roll that out. I think picking it up would probably be, we could also post it on our website. We did the same thing as the BDD, I believe. Yes, so.
When do you expect to hear that information from DCEO?
I would say two weeks, three weeks. Stephanie, what'd you say?
I spoke to them today. I know that they were hoping to finalize the final grant agreement sometime this week, but there were some delays. So I'm not sure if they're still on that timeline or not. I would say definitely within two weeks.
And I believe it said it's a 10-day turnaround once the application's received and approved. So.
So who, who does it? Do they submit them back to you, and then you approve them?
Correct, yes.
And we have 10 days to get it out?
Yes, we have to go through each application and make sure they hit all the requirements, and they are approved here. Kind of like the BDD. They went through Stephanie first to me, and then I signed off on them. But again, the requirements are good. It's going to take a lot longer on these applications, so.
Good job.
Yep.
Anyone else? Just while we're on the subject of businesses in Peoria Heights and struggling with coronavirus, not everyone has the financial ability. But if, if you do have the ability, try and order out once a week from one of our many restaurants. Or if the weather permits, we're trying to leave the street seats out as long as possible. The heaters at some of these places are fantastic. So if you're able to stop and have a, a drink, or a beverage, or a lunch, anytime, just encourage everyone to, to do that, to support our local businesses. So if there's nothing else on this, madam clerk, would you call the roll?
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeBoer?
Counsel has advised me to abstain due to a potential conflict of interest?
All right. I will note that in the record. Thank you, trustee DeBoer. That passes five.
That passes without an abstention. All right. Thank you, madam clerk. Next is miscellaneous business. Any miscellaneous business come for the board?
Yeah, Mayor, with the, with Illinois moving into Tier 3 and more and more businesses closing, are we suspending water shut offs or anything? Because I know there's a lot of people now that are going to be unemployed again. And each week, it seems to get worse. I heard today they're closing casinos. And I'm sure we'll end up, I don't know if it goes up or down, but phase, was it phase four worse?
Phase two is worse.
Phase two is worse. I couldn't imagine us not going to phase two and then phase one at some point. So I know there's a lot of people hurting. I don't know. I know we did the initial $20 thing for the credit on the water bill. I know it's a bill that is expensive. And I know the eviction was.
Extended.
Extended as well.
Evictions?
Yeah. So I didn't know if there was any consideration for assistance with people who can prove that they've been laid off as a result of COVID, if we had anything that we were planning on doing.
Well, I know we worked, when we, earlier this year, we worked out a few different programs with the residents who, if they were, if they were behind, and it worked well. So what I'll do is meet with staff and see if there's something else we can do, similar to that, and kind of what kind of a timeframe we're looking at. But if some, we'll address this week.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Anyone else under miscellaneous?
Do we not really shut off in the winter, though? We do. Okay.
All right. Be it payment of the bills, I would ask for a motion to pay the bills?
Still moved.
No, a second? Any discussion on the motion, or any question on any of the bills? Madam clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeBoer?
Aye.
That passes. Next is the treasures report. I would ask, madam clerk, if you read that first, and I get a motion?
As of the end of October, there was $3,691,618.51 in the village-controlled accounts. There was $1,309,708.91 in the water-controlled accounts.
Dustin, you and I were talking today about fund balances. You want to comment on that report?
Well, I'm pretty proud of that report, especially where we were a few years ago. I think that everybody on this board should be proud of that report. And especially proud of my staff. Stephanie, Sarah, and Emily have done a great job. Dave, Mike, done a wonderful job. So I think everyone should be proud of that report. We've come a long way, just in three years, with almost a million-dollar deficit to, to have those kind of numbers. So thank you for all your support.
Thanks to everybody that was mentioned. Any questions on the report? I think we need a motion, don't we, madam clerk, to accept the, we need a motion to accept the treasures report, please?
Still moved.
A second? Okay. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gett, that was you who made the motion?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Trustee DeBoer. Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeBoer?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Trustee Gett?
All right, everybody have a happy Thanksgiving. I move to adjourn.
Sir, a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor of the motion signify